Please, Antonia Ramirez, Herman Armando, Wayne from Encino, Juan Rodriguez, Anna Dugarte, Arden Validia, and Armando Flores. Please come forward. One minute. For your comment, thank you.
Excuse me, sir, I'm gonna translate publicly because people can't hear that well out here.
Okay, thank you.
Buenas tardes, ahora vamos a empezar el comentario público si hoy en su nombre, por favor, ponme en línea acá y nosotros les vamos a traducir. Okay, so sir, I'm sorry, sir, would you remind repeating the names?
Yes, Antonia Ramirez, Herman Armando, Wayne from Encino, Juan Rodriguez, Anna Duarte, Arlen Valida, Armando Flores. One minute, please.
Thank you. I am opposed to any illegal wetbacking gangbanger working in the United States of America. What we should have is ICE deport them at full throttle. Many of them are engaged in a criminal enterprise that includes drug dealing, weapons, and also sometimes or many times you worry about the food being tainted, contaminated, spiked, spitballs, caca put in your food like they do at Burger King, Carl's Jr., Burger King and all the other fast food restaurants, Denny's and IHOP too. You worry about the food because again they don't wash their hands, they don't use hygiene, they don't clean their environment. How do you know that what they're cooking or what they're preparing is not safe and sanitary? Not, second thing is every time you see a vendor, they're always eating. So they're always touching their mouth and all sorts of things, but they're and they're giving away your food, you know, and you're the contaminating the food. And they also park by the banks and they may also end up kidnapping our mayor.
Thank you.
God bless America.
Thank you, next please.
Fuck the mayor of Los Angeles who denies the working class people the opportunity to work. When do you allow people to work who want to work? It's those other varments of homeless fucking people that live in your fucking communities that you allowed to fuck up our work environment. A hostile fucking environment. And you allow these motherfuckers to put their shit on the sidewalks, sleep on the fucking sidewalk, dump their urine and shit all over our fucking streets and homes and residential areas, and you have done not one motherfucking thing. You bunch of hypocrite democratic stupid piece of shits like Rue who raped a woman one time while she was unconscious.
So let's, let's get back to the question.
Please stay on the topic.
Fuck your stupid bullshit Senate Bill 946 and on behalf of Mr. Walvo, the attorney of Mike Fuer, fuck your services.
Alright, thank you, next.
That's right. I tried to do my street vending in the 12th district trying to sell my puppets and that racist fucking Jew nigger Mitchell Englander wouldn't let me goddamn sell my stuff on the 118 in Tampa Avenue. I'm trying to sell City Hall puppets that I'm trying to street vend and because I'm goddamn white, because I'm a goddamn Jew district that fucking Mitchell Englander fucking goddamn call the police and won't let me sell my goddamn puppets off the 118 and goddamn Tampa Avenue. That goddamn racist, goddamn Jew Mitchell Englander, that motherfucking short fucking dribble dork motherfucker. And now we got goddamn mayor. Got the goddamn mayor fucking with the vendors. Alls they're trying to do is try to sell shit. They want the sales tax, they want all this fucking shit. Alls we wanna do is get up and sell our fucking shit and go home to our families. We just wanna sell our fucking shit. Let us sell our shit, Price, you stupid motherfucker.
Next, next please. Next, please. Please.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, my name is Arlen Valdivian. I'm here on behalf of the Motion Picture Association of America and our member companies.
Can you speak up, please? Wait, wait, is the mic on? And let's, uh, let's give the speaker your attention, please. Everyone deserves to be heard.
Uh, good afternoon. My name is Arlen Valdivian. I'm here on behalf of the Motion Picture Association of America and our member companies. We appreciate being part of the process for the last two years and working with the various stakeholders to achieve something that protects entertainment venues and filming while ensuring sidewalks are safe for both vendors and pedestrians. While we understand this-
Wait, 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 excuse me, excuse me.
So can we hold? Can we hold the speaker's time?
Yes, hold, hold speaker's time. Any more disruption that you'll be asked to leave?
Thank you. While we understand the CLA recommends including specific restrictions into rules and regulations, we would prefer that the restrictions around film production entertainment venues such as Universal and the Hollywood Walk of Fame be specifically referenced in the draft ordinance based on the council's intent. We're happy to continue working with the council and the various departments to move this forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And, and, Mr. President, that's Mr. Spindler shouting from the back this time.
Okay, he should be asked to leave. Yes, sir, just identify yourself, please.
Uh, good afternoon, council members. My name is Armando Flores, Legislative Affairs Manager with the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA. Uh, we applaud the efforts to address sidewalk vending and commend the hard work that has been invested by each and every one of you in developing a comprehensive policy proposal. Uh, we especially appreciate the efforts to address concerns raised by the business community and stakeholders. We urge you to move forward with an ordinance that specifically includes exemptions for entertainment venues rather than including them into rules and regulations. We need to establish certainty in an ordinance rather than incorporating restrictions and exemptions in a changeable document that can look different in a few years from now. We also urge you to consider distancing requirements for vendors. We must ensure we maintain safe and passable walkways that remain accessible for pedestrians. We want to ensure that businesses are also able to operate with as little disruption as possible. That has always been our vision. We urge you to consider these recommendations and suggestions and we appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Juan Rodriguez. Nosotros representamos a la Unión Popular de Vendedores Ambulantes del área de MacArthur Park.
Hi, my name is Juan Rodriguez and we represent, um, the popular union of street vendors in MacArthur Park.
Uh, nosotros fuimos el primer modelo de regulación en el área de, del, del parque MacArthur.
We were the first, uh, model of, uh, regulated street vending in MacArthur Park.
Actualmente existe un mercado comunitario el cual está funcionando correctamente.
We have a program that is working correctly.
Y aparte ha terminado la violencia en el área de, de la estación del metro.
Violence has stopped.
Por lo cual nosotros quisiéramos pedirles a ustedes que, uh, terminara la incertidumbre para los vendedores ambulantes que no saben actualmente como, cuál va a ser el proceso de regulación y de reglas de seguridad para todos los vendedores.
Uh, we'd like to, uh, uh, we'd like to have assurances that, uh, vendors will be educated about what's possible and what's not.
Gracias.
Thank you, thank you. Anna Duarte. Not here, okay. Uh, Arlo Aureliano, Vilin Ortiz, Caridad Vázquez, Carla De Paz, Claire Fox, Doug Smith, Ellen Rioto.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Caridad Vázquez.
Good afternoon, my name is Caridad Vázquez. And I'm a street vendor.
Antes quería decirles que es inaceptable que no tengamos introducción a español para todos los otros que vendemos.
First of all, I wanna let you know that it's unacceptable for there not to be interpretation for all of us who speak Spanish and don't understand English.
Muchos de nosotros no sabemos inglés.
Many of us don't know English. We don't understand what's happening. We don't know what we're gonna say and what is gonna be told to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Belén Ortiz.
My name is Belén Ortiz.
Soy vendedora ambulante.
I'm a street vendor.
Vendo en la 47th and Main.
I sell on 47th and Main.
Y estamos aquí, mis compañeros y yo, porque estamos luchando por un permiso.
And we're here because we've been fighting for a permit.
Porque nosotros los vendedores sufrimos muchas cosas.
We've suffered many things.
Tenemos que madrugar temprano.
We have to wake up early
Para agarrar nuestros espacios.
To get our spot.
Nos exponemos a la violencia.
We expose ourselves to violence, extortion,
Y muchas cosas.
Many things.
Entonces estamos luchando aquí para que, por favor, nos ayuden.
So we're here to ask for your help to get our permits. And we are willing
A ser parte de la economía de este país.
To be part of the economy of this country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mi nombre es Aureliano Santiago.
My name is Aureliano Santiago.
Soy vendedor ambulante.
I'm a street vendor.
Alvarado y la Wilshire.
On Alvarado and Wilshire.
Señor Consejal Cedillo.
Mr. Councilmember Cedillo.
Es urgente
It's urgent.
Que se haga un distrito especial.
To create a special vending district.
Porque habemos muchos vendedores que estamos en la banqueta.
Because there is many vendors who are on the sidewalk.
Necesitamos un espacio especial
We need a special space for us.
Por qué? Para que no haya dificultades entre compañeros.
So that there isn't difficulties between the vendors.
Tenemos, o ustedes tienen que ubicar un lugar adecuado para nosotros que es en la banqueta, es lo que estamos peleando.
We need to identify an adequate space for us to vend on the sidewalks because that's what we're fighting for, vending on the sidewalk.
Estamos en la mejor disposición
We are more-
De contribuir con esto y con la-
We are more than willing to contribute to the city.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Ellen Riato. I'm the Executive Director of the South Park Business Improvement District. The South Park bid is home to both the entertainment hub of Los Angeles with L.A. Live, Staples Center, and the Convention Center as well as the fastest growing residential population in all of L.A. Keeping the district clean and safe for residents and visitors alike is our number one priority. While we fully support the decriminalization of sidewalk vending, we also recognize the significance of regulation on carts and placement. On game nights, the east side of Figueroa where campus security does not patrol is simply impassable due to the number of vendors that congregate. The scene is downright unsafe as pedestrians are forced off the sidewalk and into the streets with vehicular traffic. In addition to the masses, unregulated food, food carts have led to literal explosions of propane tanks launching flames six feet into the air causing obvious safety concerns for passersby and the vendors themselves. When the mass is clear, the bids team is left with piles of tossed food and huge puddles of grease on the sidewalk. Please work with us to ensure our neighborhood can accommodate this legislative change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Efain Serrano.
My name is Efain Serrano.
Vendo la 43rd y Central.
I vend on 43rd and Central.
Yo fui empleado por casi 20 años de una compañía que se movió de estado.
I was employed for 20 years by a company that moved out of state.
Lo único que pedimos es la oportunidad de trabajar en la calle.
I, we are just asking for the opportunity to do our work on the sidewalk.
Para poder poner comida en la mesa de nuestras familias.
To be able to feed our families. Please don't deny us your support. Our families depend on what we do for work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Doug Smith. I'm an attorney at Public Council. Just wanna thank the three committees for acting quickly to get together for this important conversation. Uh, we're very excited to see the city finally on the cusp of a legal system that would support entrepreneurs and help protect immigrants and workers in our city. Uh, we wanna urge the committee to recommend, um, the committees, I should say, to recommend a permit system, a full permit system for sidewalk vending that will give vendors the choice to be stationary vendors in a single location or the option to be a roaming vendor. Uh, and this system should be without arbitrary limits or restrictions or exclusions, but have reasonable rules that are related to health, safety, and welfare consistent with SB 946. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, mi nombre es Carla De Paz. I'm the Director of Committee Organizing for the East LA Community Corporation. Um, I wanna thank the committees, uh, for, for moving this forward and wanting to align this to SB 946. At ELEC, we've been doing this work, um, for 10 years with vendors. Vendors came to us because they wanted to find a way to do their work legally. They wanted to find a way to work better together. We've organized thousands of vendors across the city. Um, and we're asking you to support recommendations that give vendors flexibility to vend stationary if that's what they like, to be mobile if that's what they like, but also more than anything to, to work with vendors, to not just come up with arbitrary regulations and treat vendors as if they can't work with other stakeholders, with the city, to come up with the best solutions. Folks across the city, again, in South Central, in the valley in Boyle Heights have been organizing hundreds of vendors into their own makeshift special vending districts. They are already doing that work. They've already self-imposed regulations. And, and the way to get to this, to the best program is for y'all to really extend that hand to them and work with them to make this successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Elvira Martinez, Faustino Martinez, George Miranda, Humberto Yaúli, and Jacob Ugrulli.
Can you repeat those? We, we couldn't really hear them.
Sure, Elvira Martinez, Faustino Martinez, George Miranda, Humberto Yaúli, and Jacob Ugrulli.
Buenos días. Soy vendedor del sur centro de Los Ángeles, en la May y la 47th.
Hello, I'm a vendor in South Central on Main and 47th.
Estamos aquí para abogar juntos por un permiso justo.
We're, we're here to advocate for a just permit.
Que nos permita trabajar libremente y sin ningún problema y a la vez colaborar con la ciudad.
That lets us work freely without problems and at the same time collaborate with the city.
Hay mucha gente que depende del, del, del trabajo de la venta ambulatoria.
There's a lot of folks who depend on this, on street vending.
Gente de la tercera edad, que muchas personas están enfermas.
Seniors and folks who are ill.
Y es su único sustento.
And it's their only income.
Por eso le pedimos que, por favor, nos deje el permiso para trabajar libremente y legalmente.
That's why we're asking you to give us the permit to be able to vend freely and legally.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Who's your name, sir?
Humberto Yaúli.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Yolanda Granados.
Hello, my name is Yolanda Granados.
Soy vendedora ambulante de la calle May.
I'm a street vendor on Main.
Yo trabajo para mi familia.
I work for my family.
Para sacarlos adelante, soy madre soltera.
To be able to provide for them, I'm a single mother.
Mi esposo falleció hace 12 años.
My, my husband, uh, passed away 12 years ago.
Me tuve la necesidad de salir a vender a las calles.
So I had to go vend on the streets.
Ah, por eso les pido que, por favor, agilicen el permiso de, de la venta.
I ask you to speed up this process to get permits for street vending.
Por como les digo, yo tengo a mi hijo estudiando en el colegio y tengo que sacar adelante a mi familia y es el único trabajo que tengo.
My son is studying in, in college and I have to work for him to support him. This is the only job I have.
Estamos activamente organizados en la calle May.
Right now, we're very actively organizing on Main Street.
Yo y mis compañeros vamos a respetar las reglas y el permiso que nos ven.
Uh, myself and other vendors are willing to respect the rules that are gonna be created.
Por eso estamos pidiendo que en áreas como la calle May se realicen distritos especiales.
That's why we're asking in areas like on Main Street and 47th where I vent for there to be special vending districts.
Se requieran permisos fijos.
That there be permits that are given, uh, fixed permits for vendors to set up.
Y crear respeto entre nosotros, los vendedores.
To support us in creating respect among vendors.
Sin permiso corremos el peligro de, de, del vandalismo de muchas personas o peligro de como Pedro Reyes.
Without a permit, we run the risk of, uh, of attacks or being attacked like Pedro Reyes, a vendor who was attacked in South Central.
Entonces nosotros no queremos ser atacados madrugar a las 2:00 de la mañana para, para apartar nuestro espacio.
We don't wanna have to wake up at 2:00 in the morning to reserve our space and a risk being attacked.
Por favor, les pidemos que, en nombre de todos mis compañeros, que agilicen nuestros permisos.
On the name of all of our, the vendors that I work with, I ask you to please speed up this process to get, give us permits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenos tardes, señores concejales. Mi nombre es Faustino Martinez.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Faustino Martinez.
Soy vendedor móvil en el sur centro de Los Ángeles.
I am a mobile vendor in South Central.
Estamos aquí para pedir los permisos justos.
I'm here to ask for just permits.
Para todos mis compañeros vendedores ambulantes.
For all of us, uh, street vendors.
La importancia de estos permisos.
The importance of these permits?
Es con la finalidad de que mis compañeros que ya no se expongan al peligro de sus vidas.
It's so that we don't continue exposing ourselves to risking our lives, to danger.
Cuidando sus espacios de venta para pedir, para llevar el sustento a la mesa.
Having our, uh, permit areas so that we can, uh, we can feed our families, support our families.
Estoy aquí para recordarles, señores concejales.
I'm here to remind you
No le tengan más estos permisos.
To not hold back the process of these permits.
Si el gobernador Jerry Brown
If the governor Jerry Brown
Autorizó la ley SB 946
Authorized SB 946.
Por qué ustedes piensan tanto en dar estos permisos?
Why are you taking so long and thinking so much about these permits?
Los vendedores ambulantes
Street vendors?
No queremos estar en la oscuridad.
Don't wanna live in the shadows.
Queremos trabajar dignamente con todas las autoridades que competen en esta ciudad.
We wanna work, uh, in a dignified way with all the entities that are part of the city.
Y ser libres trabajando con todos ustedes con las leyes que nos rican ustedes, señores concejales.
And be free to work, uh, under the law and work with the city.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Elvira Martinez.
Good afternoon, my name is Elvira Martinez.
Soy vendedora ambulante.
I'm a street vendor.
Eh, vendo en Panorama City. Somos como diez personas.
I vend in Panorama City, there's 10 vendors.
Y lo que estamos haciendo aquí pide un permiso.
We're here to ask for a permit.
Por favor, es muy necesario. Ustedes van a tener control de todo.
It's necessary you will be involved in controlling the situation.
Aportamos a la ciudad.
We, we are part of the city, we contribute to the city.
Y estamos bien, no estamos con miedo de que lleguen y nos quiten nuestras cosas.
We don't wanna be living in fear that, uh, folks will show up and take our stuff.
Señorita Nuri Martinez.
We know there's pros and cons, but please support.
Estamos aquí con esa finalidad, no queremos estar en la oscuridad, queremos que estar bien, trabajar.
We're here because we don't want to work in the shadows, we want to be okay, we want to work.
No queremos depender de la asistencia pública.
We don't want to depend on public assistance.
No queremos andar robando.
We don't want to be stealing or...
Queremos trabajar.
We want to work.
Por favor.
Please.
Somos en Panorama City, donde estoy en la street, somos diez personas.
In Panorama City, where I vend, it's ten of us.
Y necesitamos representantes.
And we need representatives.
Para que todo esté en orden.
So that things can be in order.
Y muchas gracias por escucharnos.
Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you.
Council members, the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce has worked...
I'm sorry, is there your name, please?
Sorry, Jacob Howdige. Council members, the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce has worked with the Economic Development Committee for several years now to ensure that adequate protections for the Walk of Fame are included in the city's vending ordinance. It is imperative that these protections are not thrown out in the process of revising the draft ordinance to comply with the new state vending law. The continued delay in the city's adoption of a vending ordinance, compounded with its policy to decriminalize vending activity, has led to a free-for-all on Hollywood Boulevard with tables, chairs, generators, cooking girls, and merchandise directly on top of the Walk of Fame, making it impossible to even see the stars. We implore you to take action to protect the city's number-one tourist attraction. Strong enforcement will be critical to ensuring that the established vending rules are adhered to. The chamber asks that the city's A-citation program be strengthened so that enforcement officers can require an official form of ID so the name of the offending individual be verified at the time of citation issuance. I'd like to submit photos to this committee so you can see how dire the situation has become on the Walk of Fame. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane Cook, Jorge Miranda, Jose Aff, Jose Rosa, Katie McEwen, Kerry Morrison.
Buenos tardes, soy Jorge Miranda.
Good afternoon, my name is Jorge Miranda.
Yo soy vendedor en el San Fernando Valle.
I am a vendor in the San Fernando Valley.
Estoy aquí para representar a toda la gente que vende en el parque de Hanson Dam.
I'm here representing vendors who vend in Hanson Dam.
Hay más de veinte vendedores.
There's more than twenty vendors.
Vendemos ahí todos los domingos.
We vend there every Sunday.
Ya estamos cansados, que los Rangers nos están corriendo y no nos dejan ni descargar nuestras cosas.
We're tired that the Rangers run us out and they don't let us unload our things.
Dice que el parque está cerrado cuando el sol baja el sol.
They say that the park closes when the sun goes down.
Y nos corren como a las cinco de la tarde, cuatro de la tarde.
And they tell us to leave at four PM.
Queremos que nos den permisos para poder vender en el parque.
We want permits to be able to vend in the park.
Ese parque es muy bonito, mucha gente va con su familia a disfrutar.
It's a really nice park, a lot of families go there to enjoy.
Hay caballos, hay comida de todo.
There are horses, there's food, all kinds of food.
Y es un lugar donde todos pueden llevar a su familia a divertirse.
And it's a place where everyone can take their families to enjoy their time.
Yo vendo ahí con mi mamá.
I vend with my mom.
Todos los domingos.
Every Sunday.
Y siempre recogemos nuestra basura.
We always pick up all of our trash.
Traemos bolsas extras para alguien que no trajo.
We bring extra bags for those who don't have trash bags.
Y le ayudamos al parque cuando los botes están llenos, sacamos la basura y ponemos otra para que sigan echando la basura.
And when the trash bins get full, we take out the trash and we put new trash bags so people can continue to collect trash.
Thank you, thank you very much. Gracias.
Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Kerry Morrison, I manage the Business Improvement District in Hollywood. We understand state laws changed, it's changed the rules of engagement. I would ask that, in the interests of public safety and pedestrians' safety, on arguably one of the busiest sidewalks in the city, which is the Walk of Fame, that you would continue to protect that sidewalk, which we have demonstrated through the photos and the videos that we have presented to you, impact people being able to get on and off buses, vendors and tables and furniture up against crosswalks and driveways, people having to walk into the roadbed in order to skirt all the activities that are happening on Hollywood Walk of Fame right now that are unregulated: food trucks, tour buses, tour hawkers, vendors, people selling merchandise, people sitting on the sidewalks. The sidewalk has become a gauntlet, and I know that any of you who brought your friends or family up there would sense that this is not a safe place for pedestrians. Please protect the Walk of Fame.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Katie McEwen. I'm an attorney with Public Counsel. I'd like to thank these committees for coming together so quickly to adopt a program that will legalize street vending for the city of Los Angeles. We fully support the proposal put forward by the L.A. Street Vending Campaign. The campaign advocates for a permit program that allows vendors to choose from a set of options: a fixed-location option, a flexible-location option, and a roaming option. These permit options not only reflect the realities of vending as it occurs now, but the system is also consistent with SB 946, the state sidewalk vending bill, that will go into effect on January first of next year. SB 946 does not require, but clearly allows, local jurisdictions to create a permit system for sidewalk vending. SB 946 also clearly allows a permit system with the multiple options that I just described. And allowing for a fixed-location permit addresses many legitimate health, safety, and welfare concerns as they were outlined in the CLA report. This includes potential overcrowding, competition for highly-desirable locations, potential extortion or rent-seeking, and accountability for keeping the sidewalk clean. We urge you to adopt the campaign's recommended permit program. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, Maria Garnica, Marian Reyes, Martha Del Valle, Martha Reyes, and Martha Socero.
Pues nosotros venimos a decirle al concejal Guisa que pues nos dé un permiso justo, que queremos trabajar, no queremos andar robando, queremos pagar impuestos, queremos lo que usted nos permita hacerle a todos para nuestros vendedores, que estamos en la lucha.
I'm here to encourage the city council to establish a permit program. We are here to contribute, we want to pay taxes, we're prepared to pay for a permit, we want to be part of the system.
Y permisos fijos.
And we want to encourage you to consider permits for fixed locations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mi nombre es Marta Ávila, soy vendedora del Valle, del San Fernando.
My name is Marta, I'm a vendor from San Fernando Valley.
Quiero que tomen en cuenta que nosotros estamos pidiendo un permiso.
We want you to know that we are asking for a formal permit system.
Que sea justo y flexible porque varios de Los Angeles están yendo a Panorama y nos quitan.
We want a just permit system and we want a fixed system that allows for us to be fixed because there's vendors that are moving around in different locations.
Llegan a las cinco de la mañana y cuando nosotros llegamos nos dicen que ya los lugares ya están, que ellos son los que ya tienen el permiso y que por favor nos quitemos cuando nosotros tenemos cinco años vendiendo ahí.
Vendors are showing up really early in the morning and displacing vendors that have been there for a long time. A fixed permit system for a fixed location will help prevent this.
Y no es justo que ellos tengan muchos lugares y están acaparando todos los lugares y no nos dejan a nosotros un solo lugar y ellos cuando ellos tienen diez lugares.
We should consider limitations for vendors, for entrepreneurs that have a lot of locations because there's smaller entrepreneurs that don't get an opportunity to vend on the sidewalk.
Señorita Nuri Martinez, le pido de su colaboración para que nos ayude ya que usted es nuestro representante, queremos colaborar con usted y la apoyamos para que usted también nos ayude.
Ms. Martinez, we want to work with you and collaborate and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the city council. My name is Martha Socero and I'm here speaking on behalf of AEG Owners and Operators of L.A. Live. We want to thank you for your previous efforts to bring a regulatory framework to a complex issue. On December 12, 2016, we submitted a letter outlining several of our reasons for seeking an exemption to a citywide legalized street vending program. Our reasons are based on our desire to maintain public health and safety. L.A. Live hosts over fifteen hundred events annually and sees over twenty million visitors a year. Their prohibition of vending in the area around Staples Center and L.A. Live is critical in order for us to safely accommodate this pedestrian volume and preserve ADA access. Already, we have experienced at least two incidents of propane tanks on vending carts which have exploded, causing potential harm both to the vendors and individuals standing in the adjacent area. These we have on security film. There are other instances where street vending carts have blocked emergency exits as well as grease deposits that form on the sidewalks. We appreciate your efforts to maintain an exemption from the street vending program for large entertainment districts such as ours and we seek, as we seek to protect the safety of the large number of visitors we see daily, and we have some photos and video as well.
Thank you. Okay, Michael Schulstone, Monica... Nick Griffith, Viola Flores, Rosanna Franco, and Santa Neeson. I'm sorry, Steve Neeson.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, I'm Michael Schulstone with Central City Association. We work to enhance the vibrancy of downtown Los Angeles. We and our members have been engaged with this issue for the past five years. Together with you, we worked hard to create a sensible approach that resulted in a draft ordinance released this past July. We have concerns about this new motion that risks undoing our efforts to make sidewalks and streets sanitary and spaces that promote the safety and welfare of all. In light of the recent typhus outbreak downtown, we know this is a public health issue and that we need sanitary and healthy conditions. We request that a new ordinance preserve the exemption for large entertainment venues such as L.A. Live, NBC Universal, Expo Park, and Dodger Stadium based on health and safety findings. Additionally, we believe there must be a provision that establishes a minimum of two-hundred to three-hundred feet distance between vendors. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Rosanna Franco and I'm a Policy Associate at the L.A. Food Policy Council. We are members of the Los Angeles Street Vendor Campaign and strongly support vendors in their fight to have a fair vending permit program in Los Angeles. We support a permit program because, among many things, it will provide programmatic support for vendors, as was laid out in the draft ordinance that was released in July. This includes incentives for healthy food vending. Healthy food vending, particularly in low-income communities of color, is a great way to have, to give more access to healthy foods. So in sum, we strongly ask for a fair street vending permit program. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Rosaria Verde.
My name is Rosaria Verde.
Vengo de la ciudad de Hollywood.
I am a vendor in Hollywood.
Yo me quiero enfocar en lo siguiente, todos necesitamos un permiso para poder trabajar, necesitamos que en el área de Hollywood sea un permiso flexible. Entendemos y estamos muy claros que es un sitio turístico, lo cual nos pone una parte negativa, pero los concejales yo les pido lo siguiente, no observen la parte negativa, añadan una parte positiva, porque al ver todos esos vendedores, al llegar tantos turistas ahí, van a ver la combinación que hay entre la ciudad y las diferentes culturas, porque no solamente porque vendas juguetes, porque vendas frutas, porque vendas esto, platican con nosotros, nos preguntan a nosotros, y siempre dicen, usted de dónde es, de México, y usted del Salvador, y usted de Nicaragua, y cada país tiene su propia cultura. O sea, no se dejen llevar por el poder económico.
Complimento, complimento.
Vean la parte positiva que similita a las diferentes culturas que representamos nosotros latino-americanos.
I'm going to try to capture everything, it's very good. So she's a vendor in Hollywood and she wants to be clear that everybody here is asking for a permit system. In Hollywood specifically, it's a cultural zone, it's a tourist attraction, but vendors are also part of that. They interact with a lot of the tourists, they talk about the countries that they're from, and they want to be part of that system and they want to support the cultural tourism of Hollywood.
Hay muchos países, mucha urbes, a nivel internacional, ustedes saben que existen diferentes quioscos que representan a diferentes países, no se cierren, los ángeles son considerados una urbe, demuestren que es una urbe, no demuestran solamente irse por la parte del dinero.
You all know that Los Angeles is a culturally diverse city from folks from all over the world. Let's not be closed to that, let's be open to that, especially in Hollywood.
Thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Nick Griffin. I am Executive Director of the Downtown Center Business Improvement District. And we support the criminalization of street vending and a permitting process and to balance the need for safe, passable sidewalks. We recommend that your comments include, we recommend that you have, that you keep three important things in mind: keep an exemption for the large entertainment venues based on health and safety findings, allow for additional special vending districts to be created with tailored restrictions that help keep our sidewalks clean, safe, and accessible, and ensure that there is a plan in place to prevent illegal dumping and promptly clean it up when it occurs. This is especially important, given the recent typhus outbreak. Food waste attracts rats that serve as harbors for disease, and illegal dumping of food waste and other items has proliferated in the downtown in recent weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes a todos los miembros presentes de esta mesa. Mi nombre es Santa Huerta, soy vendedora de Fashion Center. Estoy aquí enojada porque ustedes no han podido colaborar con la traducción.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Santa Huerta, I'm a vendor in the Fashion District. I am disappointed and upset that there isn't support for translation.
Tengo ocho años vendiendo en la calle de San Pedro, tengo dos hijos universitarios.
I have eight years vending on San Pedro Street and I have two kids at the university.
Estoy aquí porque necesitamos yo y mis compañeros tener un permiso flexible porque llegamos a las dos de la mañana exponiéndonos a tantos peligros a las pandillas que hay en la calle, por favor, necesitamos un permiso flexible, estamos dispuestos a colaborar con las reglas que ustedes nos impongan, y también estamos generando dinero a la economía de este país, señores. Gracias.
We are asking, me and my colleagues here are asking for a permit system, a flexible permit system. I show up at 2:00 AM to set up, my location in the Fashion District is very dangerous and there's a lot of gangs, and a permit system will allow us to be protected and to do our work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Paola Flores. I am the Communications Director for the Historic Court Business Improvement District. While we fully support decriminalizing street vending, we ask that the city implement a strong framework that holds vendors to the same health code standard as any other business, that the city and the county allocate appropriate and necessary funds and resources to keep the streets clean, safe, and accessible, especially considering the high volumes of illegal dumping and public health crises such as the recent typhus outbreak. In our district, Los Angeles Street is one of the most heavily impacted. While we are willing to work with the vendors, we do ask that the city take the appropriate measures to appropriately regulate this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, señores del consejo.
Good afternoon, council.
Mi nombre es Agueda García.
My name is Agueda García.
Soy vendedora ambulante.
I'm a street vendor.
En Alvarado.
In Alvarado.
Queremos un permiso que nos reconozca como negocio.
We want a permit system that recognizes us as business owners.
Poder establecer distritos especiales de venta.
We want the opportunity to develop special vending districts.
Los vendedores ya estamos organizados.
We are organized.
Y tenemos la capacidad de trabajar con la ciudad.
And we have the capacity to work with you, the city.
No queremos más incertidumbre, temor, estrés, abusos, y extorsiones por parte de gentes sin escrupulos que va a quitarnos nuestro dinero con mentiras y engaños solo porque no tenemos un permiso.
We do not want stress, fear, or harassment from unscrupulous people that do not have our best interests in mind because we don't have the protection of our permit systems.
Queremos un permiso flexible.
We want a flexible permit system.
Tenemos diez años trabajando, señores del consejo, para que ustedes nos den ese permiso.
We have been working on this for ten years in order for you to give us this permit system.
Y no vemos de ustedes nada, siempre nos engañan.
And we haven't seen any progress, you lie.
Nos dicen ahora sí y a la siguiente reunión no, por favor, toquense su corazón.
You often say yes and the next meeting you say no, please touch your heart.
Y trabajen con nosotros. as the enforcement mechanism for violating these, the vending laws and rules and regs. That is now also embodied in the state law. So from a state law perspective, locals cannot do more than administrative citations for enforcement of the vending laws. So there could be no criminal enforcement, no infractions, no misdemeanors, and your existing law is consistent. We may have to adjust the dollar amounts in order to make sure they are consistent with what is currently in the Senate bill.
I think we've got some more questions. Why don't we start on this side, Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, you already answered one of my main questions, or you partially answered, but let me get that clear. You know, so the, I'm sorry, let me process his answers right now and let me figure out, can we, just give me a minute.
Okay. Coach here, boom.
Great, thank you very much. First, let me say, Mr. Price, I want to, you know, congratulate you on moving this forward. You've been working on this issue for many years, actually, to get this moving, and we're really at a, at a watershed moment here. So congratulations on that and great work on getting us here.
Well, thanks for your cooperation as well.
Absolutely. And, and I mean, for me, the Lara bill changes the game quite a bit. I mean, I, no secret, I am not a fan of, a fan of Ricardo Lara, he's a good friend, and, but the bill, I think, is incredibly limiting for our city. It removes our local control in a, in a big way. So we have to deal with the cards that we have dealt and look at this, look at what our options are given, given the Lara bill that, that limits those options tremendously. So, given that context, and, and I guess the good news for, for all the folks who are here as, as street vendors is that regardless of what we do, come January 1, street vending is legal in the city of Los Angeles. So that is a, that's a positive thing that I think everyone should, you know, take solace in. And then the question for us is whether we go with a permit system or a regulatory system, you know, or a do-nothing system. But I certainly think we need to move forward with a permit system or a regulation system. But it's my understanding, in terms of time, there's no way, timing-wise, that we could get a permit system up and running by January. Is that true?
Well, the, the council had given instructions to design a scope of work to retain a third-party service provider.
To get the RFP.
Correct. To get the RFP.
Which is what we're going to do today, and I'm certainly going to support us moving forward on that RFP. But we need to have regulations in place because come January 1, street vending is legal in the city of Los Angeles, and we need, we need to have regulations in place regardless of whether we move to a permit system. One of my questions with the permit system has to do...
Additional fines or fees may not be assessed. City may allow community service, waive fines, or offer alternatives to paying the fine. And a violation occurring after 12 consecutive months with no violation shall be considered a first violation. New provisions for council consideration with respect to vending in parks. The city may not prohibit vending of food and merchandise in parks. However, the city may prohibit stationary vending in parks if the park has a concessions agreement. The city may also impose additional regulations necessary to ensure the public's use and enjoyment of the natural resources or recreational activities. With respect to farmers markets and swap meets, the city may restrict or prohibit sidewalk vending near special events such as, I'm sorry, near farmers markets and swap meets. With respect to a new provision, the ability to pay determination, local jurisdictions are now required to offer an ability to pay determination to individuals who are issued a violation. Individuals who are determined to be under the federal poverty line would only be responsible for paying 20% of the penalty. With respect to the number of permits, there is no cap on the number of permits that an individual may request. The law provides flexibility to local jurisdictions to either adopt rules and regulations consistent with state law or establish a permit-based system. The council may even consider maintaining the status quo. This would mean that the city would not have the ability to enforce, though, any violation, any vending violations at all, but can enforce other municipal codes such as blocking the sidewalk or selling illegal goods. Inasmuch as the city council already opted to establish a permit-based program, it is recommended that the council continue to proceed with the implementation of a permit-based process. Lastly, the CLA report contains recommendations to revise the draft city attorney ordinance and the rules and regulations to comply with state law.
Okay, thank you. We briefly identified several areas in the city that, due to unique circumstances, would not be able to accommodate vending due to health and safety concerns. Can we still have these areas included in the ordinance? Do we have to make findings?
Good afternoon, council members. David Michelson, Chief Assistant City Attorney. With me, my colleague, Basha Dankowski. One of the things this state law focuses on fairly intently is the requirement for local municipalities to make findings that provide objective health, safety, or welfare criteria and decision-making if there are to be restrictions. So to the extent, for instance, that council wants to have a distance restriction between vendors, that is okay. But there'll need to be findings that help support the rationale as to whatever that distance ultimately will be. So the city departments and offices looking at this issue with our office's assistance will need to hone in on that issue to help provide the findings necessary to support whatever that distance footage might be between vendors, if that's going to be part of the ordinance. Similar with respect to what I refer to as no vending zones. The state law allows no vending zones if we're talking about farmers markets, swap meets, and where a special temporary event permit is pulled or a filming permit is pulled, where activities are taking place in the road right-of-way. If we're talking about other areas beyond special event permits or film permits, such as, for instance, Hollywood Boulevard, the Walk of Fame, the city will want to have findings that provide that objective support for health, safety, and welfare. And that, again, will be one of the tasks that the city departments and offices, working with our office, will want to accomplish before bringing back and as part of bringing back that draft ordinance.
We heard in the public comment from both vendors and the business community, support for a permit system. The council approved a basic outline for a permit system back in April, as you mentioned, with location-based permits for stationary vendors as well as a permit for mobile vendors. I understand we reached out to Senator Lara's office specifically on this piece of legislation to ensure that we could move forward with a permit system that would not be in conflict with SB 946. Can we move forward with the permit system and what steps do we need to take?
So again, Dave Michelson with City Attorney. We agree with the senator's office, a fair and reasonable reading of the Senate bill would allow a local municipality like the city of L.A. to use a permit-based system to issue permits for stationary and nonstationary vendors. Again, it'll be important for the council to couple with its adoption of the ordinance findings that support the rationale as to that permit system. And to the extent that there's going to be fees associated with issuance of the permit, the typical Proposition 26 fee analysis to support the dollar amount would have to be done as well. And I think that is consistent, for the most part, with what was previously before council transmitted by our office and worked on by CLA earlier this year.
So the state bill limits what we can do in terms of enforcement. Have we looked into stricter penalties or potentially confiscation of materials or equipment?
So again, Dave Michelson with City Attorney.
That's considered dangerous?
Yes. So let's start with that. The state law will not allow confiscation of equipment simply because someone is vending without a permit, for instance. However, to the extent that someone is vending with or without a permit but using equipment that would be considered objectively dangerous, so open flames, those kinds of things, there could be probably a separate city law in the municipal code that would prohibit that kind of dangerous equipment and material in the public road right-of-way. So I think that could still be accomplished without running afoul of the new Senate bill. And you got, I'm sorry, what was the second question?
Could...
Actually, it was your first question.
Yeah, have we looked into stricter penalties?
Yes. So the city of L.A. was probably one step ahead of the state legislature on this issue. The council had already contemplated only providing for administrative citations as the enforcement mechanism for violating the vending laws and rules and regs. That is now also embodied in the state law. So from a state law perspective, locals cannot do more than administrative citations for enforcement of the vending laws. So there could be no criminal enforcement, no infractions, no misdemeanors. And your existing law is consistent. We may have to adjust the dollar amounts in order to make sure they are consistent with what is currently in the Senate bill.
I think we've got some more questions. Why don't we start on this side? Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, you already answered one of my main questions, or you partially answered, but let me get that clear. You know, so the, I'm sorry, let me process his answers right now and let me figure out.
Okay.
Just give me a minute.
Bob?
Coach here, boom.
Great, thank you very much. First, let me say, Mr. Price, I want to congratulate you on moving this forward. You've been working on this issue for many years, actually, to get this moving, and we're really at a watershed moment here. So congratulations on that and great work on getting us here.
Well, thanks for your cooperation as well.
Absolutely. And I mean, for me, the Lara bill changes the game quite a bit. I mean, I, no secret, I am not a fan of Ricardo Lara. He's a good friend. But the bill, I think, is incredibly limiting for our city. It removes our local control in a big way. So we have to deal with the cards that we have dealt and look at this, look at what our options are, given the Lara bill. That limits those options tremendously. So, given that context, and I guess the good news for all the folks who are here as street vendors is that regardless of what we do, come January 1st, street vending is legal in the city of Los Angeles. So that's a positive thing that I think everyone should, you know, take solace in. And then the question for us is whether we go with a permit system or regulatory system, you know, or a do-nothing system. But I certainly think we need to move forward with permit system or a regulation system. But it's my understanding, in terms of time, there's no way, timing-wise, that we could get a permit system up and running by January. Is that true?
Well, the council had given instructions to design a scope of work to retain a third-party service provider.
To get the RFP.
Correct. To get the RFP.
Which is what we're going to do today, and I'm certainly going to support us moving forward on that RFP. But we need to have regulations in place because come January 1st, street vending is legal in the city of Los Angeles, and we need to have regulations in place regardless of whether we move to a permit system. One of my questions with the permit system has to do with cost-benefit analysis of it. And I'm going to ask at some point for an amendment that we add in a cost-benefit analysis on the permit process, because you mentioned Prop 26. I don't think we're in any danger in Prop 26 because the limitations of the Lara bill basically ensure that whatever permit system we have will not pay for itself, because we have to, the fees that we have are so limited that the permit system at the end of the day is going to come out of the general fund. Is that pretty much accurate?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. So given that the case, and it's a good thing, and there are a lot of good things about having a permit system, the least or the most of which, I think, is the ability to prevent the extortion that goes on on vendors, which is unconscionable. Another thing I'm going to ask for is that we add in, request that we have criminal penalties and civil penalties for anyone who interferes with a lawful vending activity, to try to prevent that extortion from happening. I think regardless of whether we go with permit or regulation or some combination, we need to be tough on preventing extortion. So I'm going to add that in, and I've talked to the chair, and he's, I assume he's going to accept that, we'll move forward on that. But I wanted to understand something about the permitting system as well, because we're moving, does it have to be an all-or-nothing proposition? Because can we have permitting for the areas of high competition and regulations on the remainder of the streets? Is there a hybrid possibility?
Dave Michelson, City Attorney. That may be a legal framework that would survive judicial scrutiny. In other words, a regulatory scheme that covers the city of L.A., but certain areas, maybe because of high traffic, high desirability for stationary vending, for instance, would be done by a permit system that would have permit fees associated with it. And as long as those fees are not higher than what is necessary to cover the city's administrative costs, I would be fine as well. So I haven't really given great thought to that, but presumably you potentially could do that.
In the report back, I've been asked for that as well, to look into that possibility, because I'm worried that the cost of permitting every street corner in Los Angeles and figuring out where all of those spots are is going to be enormous. And we don't have the opportunity to recover those costs because of the limitations of the Lara bill. So then it's going to be a question of how much money are we going to spend for this permitting system? And if we're talking about tens of millions of dollars, that money, if we wanted to devote it to vending, might be better on regulation and protection than on just on permitting. So that is a question I don't have the answer to, I don't expect you to have the answer to, and I don't think we need to have the answer to today, because today, as I understand it, we move forward on getting the RFP together, but we don't necessarily, we're not authorizing awarding of a contract. So we could ask for the RFP, I'm asking, I'm putting it out there, but I'm asking for confirmation of this. We can ask for the RFP, get that ball rolling so we don't miss any time opportunity, put in place regulations, and then we can evaluate whether or not the cost, based on that RFP, is worth an entire permitting the city system or a hybrid permitting system or just moving to a regulatory system. Is that correct?
That is correct. We can, in our report, we do request council authority to, provide the CLA with authority to revise the scope of work and also give us authority to release the scope of work.
Okay, great.
And if, I'm sorry, council member, but ultimately, the city attorney's office will need clear direction from full council as to what changes you all want to see with respect to the ordinance. We, of course, have the ordinance that was transmitted back earlier this year that's going to require some modifications. Some of it clearly needs to be modified to be consistent with the Senate bill, but other modifications for policy reasons, we, of course, take our cues from the council. So we'll look forward to receiving that, and then we will turn the draft ordinance quickly.
And that, of course, would be informed by the information that we get back. Which departments would actually draft the RFP for vending?
The CLA.
CLA would do it. Okay. And it's possible to offer flexible in terms of the terms that they have to offer or what could be offered depending on the cost, is that right?
Correct.
To be flexible.
Correct.
And you said something I didn't understand about the number, the cap, there's no cap on the number of permits that someone can apply for?
Initially, the council had approved the provision that allowed individuals to apply up to three permits for three different locations. But my interpretation of the bill is that you can no longer limit that, and so individuals wishing to apply for both, let's say, vending on the sidewalk and vending in parks for multiple locations, they could do that.
So one person could apply for 50 locations? I mean, how does that play with our desire? We want to promote the, you know, the single entrepreneurs and not, we don't want to be taken over by a large company subletting out these...
So Councilmember Dave Michelson, I can address that. We have not had an opportunity to consult with our colleagues in the CLA's office on that particular issue, but our initial legal advice is that the council, with appropriate findings, can continue down the road of limiting the number of permits that are issued, whether you want to stick with the number three that was embodied in the draft ordinance transmitted earlier this year or some other number. We think that is likely legally feasible, again, with some maybe additional findings to support that. But we'll work with our colleagues in the CLA's office to nail that down.
But that's reassuring, because I think, I don't know what the magic number is, but I think we all share the goal of wanting to promote the mom-and-pop vendors, and unlimited numbers sounds to me like it could do the opposite.
I think, Councilmember, your instincts are right, because in the Senate bill, much of the intent is based on supporting entrepreneurial efforts, especially with lower-income individuals in the state. And by limiting the number of permits, more than likely supports that same intent.
Okay. And then, just, I guess, last question's kind of minor, but my district has a lot of residential streets that do not have sidewalks, and the questions about vending, it's my understanding that this, nothing we're doing allows vending on streets that don't have sidewalks. Is that correct?
Vending would not be allowed, because it would not be safe, clearly, in the traveled road right-of-way, in the street itself. So vending needs to be where pedestrians are otherwise lawfully allowed to pass, which is typically sidewalks, if we're talking about, you know, in the road right-of-way, but never within the travel.
A street with no sidewalk is not being opened up to vending?
The street would not be opened up to vending, no. We're talking about sidewalks only, correct.
Okay.
And then, of course, parks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let me call on Councilman O'Farrell, Chair of Arts, Entertainment, Parks, and River.
Thank you, Mr. Price, and thank you for your leadership. I echo Bob's remarks in terms of the work that you have done and your office has done in the interest of actually, with a sense of urgency, getting a vendor ordinance in place for the city of Los Angeles. And to everyone who's listening, please understand that there has been a very concentrated effort on the city council to get an ordinance up and running so that it could better serve you, the entrepreneurs who are, you know, working to do this line of work. A lot of my questions have been answered. I think that in relation to the remarks that Bob just made, and then I'm going to get to some questions related specifically to parks. We have, in the several thousands of street vendors, existing in this not-so-underground economy that we want to bring into, you know, the sunlight, and that'll be good for our overall economy. I can't imagine the city getting into any sort of permit system for these thousands and thousands of vendors. A regulatory system seems to make a lot of sense. But we'll get the reports back on how, you know, that will inform our decision-making. In terms of regulation in the parks, though, at Art, Entertainment, Parks Committee that I chair, we've had lots of discussions about a system of legalized sales and service, a permitting system for sales and service in our parks. So this is something that I think that we can be prepared for in our parks system for January 1st. So that's the good news. We heard, excuse me, we've heard reports and recommendations in my committee regarding proposed number of permits per size, character, in relation to already existing concessions. And what I'd like from you, Mr. Michelson, a city attorney's opinion in terms of, based on SB 946, are we okay to proceed with a permit system for parks as we've currently discussed in some of the directions that have we've been led to? It seems, my assumption, based on reading the new law, is that we're in compliance so far with our approach, but I just, I want some validation of that.
Dave Michelson, the City Attorney. Unfortunately, my colleague, Valery Flores, is traveling for work today and probably could more accurately answer that question, but let me give it my best shot. Number one, in the Senate bill, vending in parks is treated somewhat differently than vending on the sidewalk. Indeed, local jurisdictions, including the city of L.A., will have a greater ability to apply sort of increased regulatory limits when we're talking about vending in parks versus vending on sidewalks. So that's number one. Number two, the Parks Department and the Board of Record Parks Commissioners will have the ability to impose permits, if that's their inclination, and it's my understanding it probably is. Some of the nuances include if a park has, for instance, a concessionaire agreement already in place, in particular if it's exclusive, that can preclude, therefore, stationary vendors from being in the park. There can also be limits imposed on nonstationary vendors in the park based on, you know, findings that would support that. So to the extent that the conversations in your committee have sort of been in that context, that still would be correct, be accurate.
And within that, we know that the city charter governs parks very specifically and not so similarly to our public rights-of-way and our sidewalks, et cetera. And when we get to the requests, the recommendations, I'll get into that a little bit. But to your knowledge, what would enforcement look like? What would the differences of enforcement look like between parks and sidewalks?
Well, first, I should mention that there will need to be some changes in the municipal code with respect to parks and vending. Currently, I believe the municipal code does not allow for vending in the parks. That obviously will have to be changed. That'll be sort of the package of ordinance changes that will be timely brought forth.
And that's not new. We knew we'd have to do that anyway.
That's exactly right.
And we were leaning toward that.
The day of reckoning has come a little sooner, maybe. So we'll need direction from council to get that done, but we're already beginning to put pen to paper. But in terms of your question as to sort of enforcement, again, under the state law, even sort of stronger regulatory limits can be imposed within the park setting. However, the actual penalties would not be any stiffer, so to speak, than what you would find in sidewalks. We're talking about only administrative citations, no criminal imposition, no infractions, no misdemeanors. Presumably, park rangers and others who have the enforcement arm within parks would have the ability to write those citations, though. Does that answer your question?
It does, yeah. And of course, we'll get more specifics, the recommendations that I'm going to make once the questioning concludes will relate to some of that information as well to report back to my committee. So, thank you.
Okay, members?
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. Price, and I thank all the committee chairs, and I really thank the CLA and the city attorney's office for all the tremendous work that you guys already put into this. I just want to, I don't want to reiterate what everybody else has said, but I do want to acknowledge what Councilmember Bob Blumenfield said about the, and I second his request for, requesting the city attorney to look at provisions that would establish criminal and civil penalties for those interfering with lawful vending activity, in particular, you know, any extortions made to the vendors or any kind of threats that are made. That is something, I know that is a little to the side of what we're actually talking about today, but it is very, very important. I think many of the people today spoke about that, so I am very highly in favor of that. So I just have two questions. You know, in the previous versions, we created a requirement with the permit system for the selected service provider to assist with expungement of misdemeanors. Is that component still intact, and would that happen if the council decided to move with a permit system?
Well, I'll say this briefly.
The decriminalization part, yeah.
Right. The, I think the service vendors, the service providers, excuse me, their scope of work could include providing that service, is my understanding, and I'd have to look to our colleagues here at CLA to have a better understanding as to whether that's still sort of being contemplated.
That provision currently exists, so we can include that in the RFP. The question would be, is it permissible under the new state bill?
I think it's perfectly fine under the new state bill. Frankly, it might even match up quite well with the intent of the state bill, so I think that's fine legally.
So, once we do move forward with the direction, and if that's applicable, I would really like to include that. The second question is, and you went through this extensively, the City Attorney, the state law restricts our enforcement ability to issue, to the issuance of basically a citation, right? And you also alluded to possible confiscation, depending on for what reason. You know, I would really like to include, and I know the chairs have various recommendations, but I'd really like to make sure that we explore in what avenues we can confiscate. But are there any other enforcement options besides a citation and possible confiscation that might apply to vending-prohibited areas established by health, safety, and welfare findings?
No. The state law is actually very specific and almost repetitious, quite frankly, when you read the bill with that in mind. So it's really strictly what is the city's equivalent of a citations. And to the extent that confiscation is going to be pursued as a policy, it's going to have to be very limited in the context of dangerous equipment, dangerous material, not simply that someone's illegally vending.
So a sub-question is, if we move forward with the creation of a permit system, and if an individual without a vending permit was operating in an area where health and safety findings allowed the city to prohibit or restrict vending, would there be any other city ordinances or can we do violations that would apply, such as blocking of a public right-of-way, creating a dangerous condition, or a public nuisance?
So the act itself of vending and vending without a permit or vending in a zone where vending is not allowed, the state law is very specific. It's simply a citation, and that's going to be the end of that. If someone, however, is violating another city law...
Or is there another city law that they can't violate?
Yeah, you're not permitted to block ingress egress into driveways and to doors and buildings. It's a separate provision in the municipal code. We'd have to think about that a little bit.
That'll be interesting if we could include that in the report, beyond our vending ordinance, if there's any other city ordinances or citations that could be done or enforcement. That's all. Thank you.
Right, CLA has reminded me, Felipe, he's absolutely right. First, if someone's selling counterfeit goods, for instance, clearly, it's a criminal conduct, and that law on the books will absolutely be available to law enforcement. That's a great example.
Counselor Blumenfeld?
Just a quick announcement. The Public Works Committee was scheduled to meet at 2:15 in this room, thinking this hearing would be over. Obviously, this hearing is going on. I just wanted to announce for folks who are here for that meeting, public works, regular Public Works Committee hearing will take place upon adjournment of this meeting in this room, but obviously, it will be delayed until this meeting is over. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselwoman Rudigas?
No, actually, I will go ahead, and I think, colleagues, I think many of you have already answered a lot of the questions. And, Mr. O'Farrell, thank you for your line of questioning, because particularly as it relates to the parks and understanding how that system is going to be operating is very important. It was indicated by some of the speakers as well in terms of parks in my district, so I look forward to Record Parks coming forward with their proposal. And just, again, for us, in terms of enforcement and what that looks like at the parks versus how it operates on our streets is going to be a very important part of the conversation, but I, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Counselwoman Rudigas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for all the work you've done so far. So I have a couple of questions, one of them being, so what is the status of the fee, the fee study, the enforcement, and the budget, and the program budget that we talked about? All of these things were supposed to be finalized by January 1st. I know we have a deadline because of this new legislation, but how does that all come to play?
The law only requires that the city adopt the rules and regulations as a requirement to enforce by January 1st. The fee study, though, is, was a request by council back in April. I understand the CAO is currently working on it, and...
It was a fee study, the enforcement, and the program budget?
Correct.
There was three different things?
Correct. And if you'd like, I can also provide you a...
So the fee study is underway?
It's on... It's on its way. You mentioned the...
Enforcement and the program budget?
Yes, with the enforcement protocols. Those were included in the previous ordinance. I'm not sure if those need to be revised or revisited once again.
That was going to be my next question, is if we needed to go back and revisit that?
Yeah, we'll make sure that the revised draft ordinance, as to the dollar amounts associated with the A citation, do not exceed what's provided in state laws.
Okay.
To the extent that they exceed now, we'll drop them down, so they're no higher. But they do not, okay. My colleague, Boshia, says they're actually lower, so the, the draft ordinance that's pending in front of you, some of the dollar amounts are actually lower than what the state law would otherwise allow for, but in all instances, it's certainly not higher than what state law allows for currently in the ordinance.
And when are we going to get that back?
So we are waiting full council direction for whatever specific changes. We'll obviously make changes the state law requires regardless, but there's some policy decisions to be made, and then requests of the city attorney, we'll, we'll turn the revised draft ordinance quickly.
Did you want to add anything? You were just nodding your head. Okay. And then my other question was, so what does the enforcement look like? It seems like there is very little place to deter potential violators under the new law. So if, if, for example, if a vendor is encroaching on a safety issue or an intersection, what is the, what is ACE or the Bureau of Street Services, realistically, what can they do?
Hello, Gary Harris, on behalf of the Bureau of Street Services. One of the things mentioned earlier is that we can enforce other appropriate city laws, and one of the things, working with the City Attorney's Office, that we plan to pursue during this period is the changing laws related to blocking sidewalks, merchandise of sidewalks, and doing what we can to make those laws more fitting with this new ordinance on vending. We won't be enforcing it for vending, but we will be enforcing blocking the sidewalk and those related municipal ordinances with the Americans with Disabilities Act and pedestrian passage in order to keep the sidewalk clear. We could use those enforcement techniques for public safety, but not directly related to vending.
Well, it just seems that, in this particular area, that the city can actually make a significant, we can have significant action if we can enforce our own city laws or regulations when it comes to blocking an intersection or, or blocking a sidewalk or the public right-of-way, correct?
Right, but some of these laws do need amendment, and we're going to work with our partners at the City Attorney's Office to ensure that we have the laws amended properly for full enforcement, since we will be limited in what we can do directly related to vending.
Did you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you. Greg Spots, Assistant Director, Bureau of Street Services. Another direction we're contemplating is, could we sort of, our street services investigators be deputized by county health to enforce the county health regulations for food vendors? And that would give us additional tools to make sure that the food vending is safe.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted to go back to the CLA's report, where it suggests that the two-vendor-per-block restriction may not comply with the state's law. So my question is, so then how can the council prove that the two-block restriction isn't a, isn't a random preference, but rather rooted from a formal, actual health or safety concern? How do we make that official determination?
Well, the, the city would not be able to make a standardized two-per-block process.
That's off, that's completely off the table.
Correct. But if you, if the council does it on a case-by-case basis, there may be streets where only two vendors may be allowed.
So what does that look like? What does that official determination look like if we can, if the city can make the case for that particular problem, whether you have more than two vendors and, per-block?
So any of these limitations are going to be, have to back, have to be backed up by findings that are really focused on objective health, safety, and welfare criteria. It's probably safer and maybe more practically effective if the city was to focus on distance restrictions, like between vendors. Vendors need to be at all times X feet apart, whether stationary, nonstationary. The city with some findings to support, whatever that, that, that footage might be, could easily bake that into the rules and regulations, into the city law, and be able to enforce that, and then also provide the kind of unrestricted pedestrian flow necessary on sidewalks.
Okay.
So a sort of a distance-based regulation...
But that's what we can...
Might be more productive.
Okay. All right, thank you. I have two more questions, Mr. President, before I conclude. I know Mr. Blumenfeld touched on the, the extortion issue, and I know we have current laws on the books when it comes to robbery and extortion and so on, but what I want to get to is, people who are being forced to work for bad employers, vendors who actually get taken advantage of and work for someone else for very little money, and on top of that, get taxed by a local gang member, where they're potentially vending in their so-called territory. What can we do to protect people from bad actors, but more importantly, by some of these gang members? I know I have some of these issues in my district, where the local gang member will come in and tax the poor vendor who isn't necessarily owns his or her own product or vending equipment, but they're getting taxed on top of what they're already making for this, this other employer who's, who they're, he or she is working for. Does that make sense?
This is Dave Michelson, the city attorney. It does make sense, and it's a very important issue, and we appreciate you and your colleagues bringing it up here today. As you pointed out, Councilmember, there are already, already are laws on the books, including at the state level and the penal code, that provide a degree of protection and a tool, therefore, available to law enforcement, both police officers and prosecutors. But we will be pleased in our office to work with our criminal branch and to work with LAPD and other interested entities to try to determine whether additional laws could be placed on the books that might provide additional levels of protection for this vulnerable population, for street vendors.
Very well. And the last question I had, Mr. Chair, is, do, what are the requirements for discharging waste? I know we've gone through, we've done a lot of work throughout the years to put together requirements for food trucks in terms of how they get rid of their waste. Have we given any thought to prevent illegal dumping by vendors? I mean, what are we doing in terms of making sure we have the right requirements to dispose of, of dirty water, for example, in that kind of situation? Do we know?
The vendors that are required to have L.A. County Health Permit do have current restrictions on how they dispose of waste, which they have to do to maintain the health permit. The majority of the vendors, obviously, we have, are related to food vending, so most of those restrictions and regulations would be current, covered under current county health permit authorization.
So are we working with them? Because event, I mean, it's not like a health, health department expert is going to be there at all times, making sure that the, the waste side of business is being enforced. So how are we playing a role to ensure that people have the right information and are disposing of the waste in, in the correct way, and it's not becoming a nuisance for the neighborhood?
We, our office, the city, has been working with the county health department for the last five years, working through the development of this sidewalk vending program. One of the last actions by council was to establish an MOU with the county to see where the county would be involved as part of the, working with the service provider to provide services to the vendors. So they would be very, have very close contact to the vendors.
And also, as mentioned by Mr. Spots, the Bureau of Street Services is seeking the ability to have that same enforcement authority as one of the regulatory agencies that would be involved in this program, so that the city would have its own resources to enforce the health code in addition to the county.
That was going to be my next question. All right, I appreciate it. That's it, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Busciano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the leadership of the three committees and members for their line of questioning. I think the overall sense of concern here between these three committees is the enforcement piece, and the reason why I second in this motion with my colleagues, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Price, is I was on that, the end of enforcing vending in, when I was a senior lead officer in response to the neighbors' concerns and complaints, but found that enforcement didn't lead to any success, and at the same time, knowing that we, we provide opportunities for all income levels, it's important to move forward toward a path of licensing, regulating vending, and decriminalizing it for, because we often say in the city, we are a, a city of opportunity. So I do want to applaud Mr. Weezer and Mr. Price for getting us to this point, and I think the closest we've ever been. Not anticipating, I think one of the frustrations that Senator Lara had was cities up and down the state of California weren't moving quick enough. But I'm, I'm going to predict that cities, once this comes in line, are going to be handcuffed with the enforcement piece and keeping the bad actors regulated. What we see before us, colleagues here, are vendors who are anxious and who want to have a, a law in place that's going to be fair, but just like the cannabis industry that we, we approved here and regulated, there's going to be some bad actors, and this is what I feel that we need to be prepared for. So if you look at the possibility of, of addressing or focus on the, addressing those, those individuals who are not going to abide by the rules and regs, if an officer, say, orders an unlicensed vendor to stop vending and the person refuses, what enforcement tools are available to that specific officer? Question is, another question is, if a vendor refuses to provide a valid ID, what enforcement tools are available to that officer? And what is a process for confiscation of property? And can the city, can the city require the payment of past due vending fines as a condition for releasing that confiscated property? Because that's, I mean, that's going to, those are the questions that, again, going back to Senator Lara's bill, is going to handcuff the city and other cities across the state of California. So I know, Dave, you keep shaking your head, because that's going to be some of the concerns that are going to be, that I have. You know, we're, we're marching toward a fair process, but again, we can make all the laws in the books and approve all the ordinances, but without an enforcement piece, it's not going to be effective.
I know, I appreciate that, Councilmember, and indeed, it echoes Councilmember Blumenfield's concern as well. The, the state law is very specific. It actually mentions, it applies to chartered cities, and it makes very clear that the only enforcement tool is administrative citations. And because state law clearly has occupied the field, they, therefore, the state have preempted the locals from doing anything other than that, and I appreciate that, that concern, but that is what the city's left with.
Yeah, I think, again, cities are going to be banging on the, the League of California Cities to seek some changes so that it is fair.
They're going to come to you.
They'll come to me, all right. But we do have, we will have the ACE program in place.
No, no question. The ACE program, which has been up and running for, I guess, almost three years now, Rita, has been quite successful, quite frankly, for the departments and for the city, for the departments who've...
Do you feel we have enough teeth in the ACE program to address those bad actors who are going to be vending in our city?
Well, you raise a good point. To the extent that someone doesn't have any ID, it limits a police officer's ability really to take any other affirmative action at that point. But those folks who receive the ACE citation and don't pay it, ultimately, the city tries to capture the amount that's owed through the freight, State Franchise Board Interceptor Program. I think about $100,000 has been brought in over the last year or so, from, from that sort of means to collect a debt to the city. But there will be some individuals who are not going to pay, and the city has limited ability of anything to do about that, and, and anything you can do about that. Would you not agree with Rita? Yeah, I think she agrees.
And I believe, this, the policy that we approved after four or five warnings, we can confiscate the property.
And state law makes clear...
But now state law...
Cannot, yeah, state law, state law makes clear the city cannot confiscate simply on the basis of violating vending laws. However, one of the things that I believe council's going to ask our office, in working with the CLA and others, to come back with is a separate ordinance to try to address where there's dangerous equipment, dangerous materials.
Right.
Potentially confiscation could be part of that, and also criminal sanctions as well. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer?
This time? Okay, great. Well, let me just, first of all, thank you for your presentation, and I want to thank the advocates and interested businesses who are here today and who have been with us over these past several years, coming up with a strategy and a policy. I want to take my hats off to my colleagues, who have been very thoughtful and who have been very interested in making sure that we come with a system that works. Special shout-out to Mr. Weezer, who was my co-sponsor on this motion years and years ago, and of course, Councilman Busciano, who was instrumental in creating a framework that, that we're working with today. But colleagues, I think it's safe to say that what we passed in April is in large part compliant with SB 946, and going forward, a lot of the controversial pieces of this policy are no longer even an option. The main question we have to answer is whether or not we move forward with a permit system. For me, it's an easy answer: yes. I see a permit system as being beneficial to everyone. It benefits the vendors to secure a location and to become part of the formal economy. It benefits businesses, because permitted vendors will have clear knowledge of where they can and cannot locate, and it benefits the city to have some control and knowledge on where people are locating and ensuring that they're selling, what they're selling is safe for the public. I understand that we are limited in terms of enforcement, but I believe that we can expect hundreds, if not thousands, of vendors to apply for city permits, as was demonstrated by their support in public comment today. And of course, if we never try, we'll never know. I believe my co-chairs have some recommendations they'd like to make, and I will make some as well, and then hopefully, we can take a vote and send one unified report to the council. And so let me turn to Councilman Blumenfeld.
Great. As I mentioned in earlier, I wanted to, two specific instructions to add to the ones we've discussed. One is to instruct the CLA, with the assistance of BSS and Record Parks, to report regarding the respective costs and benefits of a permit system versus a regulatory vending system, including the costs of the system, anticipated revenues from permits, ability to enforce, and the burden or benefits to the vendors. And included in that is also the idea of a hybrid, whether, you know, when we're looking at, it's not a zero-one request of permit or regulatory, it's cost-benefits of the, the zero option, the one option, and, and the what's in between. And second is to request the city attorney to include in the ordinance provisions that would establish criminal and civil penalties for interfering with lawful vending activity, including demanding payment, making threat against a person, or making a threat to report a person's immigration status.
Okay. Great, thank you. Thank you. Counselwoman O'Farrell?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Chairman Parks and Blumenfeld, and it was terrific to co-host this committee with you, the three committees. I have a number of recommendations to make based on what we just heard and some of the work that we've already conducted over the, the months. Number one, request the city attorney to preserve in the draft sidewalk vending ordinance the following. A, language to prioritize temporary special events permits, including filming, as provided by state law. B, no vending zones approved by the city council on April 17th of this year, based on health, safety, and welfare concerns, as allowed by state law. Number two, further request the city attorney to amend LAMC Section 6344 to comply with state law. Three, request Recreation of Parks, through the Board of Recreation of Parks Commissioners, to, with the assistance of the city attorney and the CLA, A, develop rules and regulations for vending of food and merchandise in city parks consistent with state law, SB 946, and report back to council vis-à-vis with the lens of the charter requirement specific to Recreation of Parks facilities by November 15th next month to, to the committee that I chair. And B, include in the rules and regulations additional restrictions as necessary to ensure the public's use and enjoyment of natural resources or recreational opportunities, and prevent an undue over-concentration of commercial activity that interferes with the enjoyment of the park as provided by state law. And number four, instruct the Department of Recreation of Parks to report relative to current enforcement of vending in parks, including recommendations for any additional resources as necessary to comply with state law, SB 946. And five, instruct the CLA to include in the RFP a requirement for the third-party service provider to conduct outreach to inform the... And lastly, finalmente, gracias a todos por venir y hablar today, for everyone, all the vendors. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me, let me add to those recommendations, that we amend the CLA report recommendation, 1C, to include in the rules and regulations a recommendation for distance between vendors based on health, safety, and welfare concerns, and a distance restriction for vendors from farmers' markets and swap meets pursuant to state law. That we instruct the CLA, with the assistance of the city attorney and other departments as necessary, to prepare and present findings based on health, safety, and welfare for the no vending zones identified by council in its action of April 17th, 2018, and prepare and present findings based on health, safety, and welfare for a location-based permit system consistent with council action of April 17th, 2018. That we request the city attorney to delete Section 42.00M, special sidewalk vending districts. That we request the city attorney, with the assistance of the CLA, Public Works, Recreation and Parks, and other departments as necessary, to report back on options for enforcement of street vending with respect to dangerous materials and/or equipment in the right-of-way. That we approve CLA report recommendations as amended, and that we note and file the Bureau of Street Services, BOE, city clerk, and city attorney reports. And members, if there...
Mr. Chair, just for the record, Armando Herman totally disrupted the meeting, made a big ruckus there purposely to distract the chamber from what you were saying. And I don't know how many disruptions we've lived with, just in this hearing alone, but he disrupted the meeting again.
Thank you. Mr. Ru, did you have a...
Mr. Chair, if I could, I guess I was told to, if I could add a couple of recommendations, it's just more report backs. Instruct the CLA, with the assistance of the city attorney's office, to report back the specific circumstances that would warrant a confiscation of vending equipment. Instruct the CLA, with the assistance of the city attorney's office, to report back on the current status of the amnesty program that is included in the sidewalk vending RFP, as well as how an amnesty program would be implemented if the city did not move forward with the sidewalk vending permit program. And lastly, as also mentioned by Councilman Martinez, instruct the CLA, with the assistance of the city attorney's office, to report on any other applicable sections of the municipal code that would be applied in the instance where a vendor is operating without a permit in a special vending district with restricted or prohibited vending.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? If not, those amendments and requests will be the order.
Okay. And since we've got three committees here, I'm just making sure everybody's adopting exactly the same thing, so we don't need to do a roll call vote to figure out who's on what committee.
Right. So what should we do?
Okay, good. Thank you.
No, I'm asking you, so what should we do?
No, I think if it's unanimous...
So without objection, the Public Works Committee unanimously agrees?
Yeah. As does Arts Entertainment Parks in Los Angeles River.
As does, that cannot be developed.
Thank you.
Okay. What other businesses before us?
No, Mr. Chair.
No other business? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Public Works will start in five minutes. Public Works in this room in five minutes.